All right. Councilman Ferguson, would you mind doing the invitation, please?
I love God, we just give you the glory and the honor. We just thank you for another day that you've kept us safe and our family safe. We ask that you will be in the midst of this meeting. We ask for your direction, your wisdom, and your knowledge, and even your spirit and your presence to be here. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen and amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
All right, hello everyone. Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Councilman Haring.
Here.
Councilman Hairston. Councilwoman Gion.
Here.
Councilwoman Faree.
Here.
Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
President Curtis.
Here.
We have six minutes.
Thank you. I can have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Move by Ms. Jones, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Councilwoman Gion, discussion.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Haring.
Yeah, question under the topic where pending resolutions, you have a resolution on there for the payment to Robert Half for the treasurer. We discussed, I know it was included in a resolution last week, and above the appointment and payment was in one resolution. So why are we having it under pending? Why isn't it under legislation to be voted on? If it's already come before us. Only it was on, it only is in one resolution, one resolution where we separated it into two, which it should be two. But I, I.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're right. It should be under legislation to vote on today, both of them. And there are two other resolutions that will be added to the pending legislation for introduction. And that is, sorry. A resolution to amend city council rules, section three oh seven, and resolution to amend the council rule section three oh eight. So adding those to, to the pending legislation slash introduction.
Another, another question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
That legislation, is that just informational purposes and we're just going to have it so citizens know what's coming tomorrow or?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right.
So we're, it's been introduced here, public hearing tomorrow, and allow citizens to speak on it. And then what we, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. A vote to, for the, to accept the agenda, including the two additional resolutions. Miss Madam Clerk.
Right, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Haring.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gion.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Faree.
Yes.
Thank you, President Ferguson.
Yes.
Thank you, President Curtis.
Yes.
Thank you, this is passed.
All right, thank you. First on the agenda tonight is the presentation on traffic calming mitigation efforts by Mr. Daryl Carrington. Is he with us today? Mayor Cross is, you know, he's going to be in attendance.
I do know that he received the invitation, sir. I'll just follow up.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll move on and kind of circle back to that presentation if we're able to make it. We were, the council has provided a list of meeting minutes to approve today from October nineteenth, November first, November sixteenth, January third, January eleventh, January thirteenth, and January the eighteenth. They have a motion to accept the minutes from those meetings.
So.
So move, Councilwoman Jones, second. Second, oh, second by Councilwoman Harry. Vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Haring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Faree?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
This is passed.
All right. These minutes have been accepted. All right, we'll move on to pending legislation. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please start with, so we don't forget, the legislation for the council rule amendments, please?
On the board, Mr. President, may I?
Yes.
If we're not acting on these, on this legislation, why is it being read tonight? I mean, it's just like it's dragging this meeting out. We're not acting on it, we're not voting on it, and we're going to have to introduce it anyway when we bring it up for a vote. So why is it, why are we even doing this? I mean, it's just, it's unnecessary stuff.
Okay, well.
I mean, I just think we notify the citizens that it's coming up, and that's all we really need to do.
I, I am perfectly fine with that, Councilman Harry. Saves us time. Thank you. So just for citizens' awareness that the pending legislation, as you can see, is one, a resolution to approve appointment of Jessica Robinson as go room coordinator. Another one for a resolution to approve the appointment of Anthony McCray as director of public works. A resolution to approve a contract with GS Proctor and Associates for professional lobbying, grant writing, applications, and public relations. A resolution to amend city council rules, section three oh seven, and lastly, another resolution to amend city council rules, section three oh which will be on the topic for tomorrow's public hearing. Mayor Cross, just want to circle back, any word from Mr.?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Mr. Harrington, Carrington should be signing on here shortly.
Okay.
And he's also prepared to share a screen.
All right. All right, well, I guess while we wait for him. We can move on to next item. Legislative vote. Legislative vote to approve the appointment of Mr. Stewart, a city treasurer, and the second one to approve the buyout from Robert Half. Madam Clerk, would you mind reading the two resolutions?
Resolution R twelve, two thousand twenty, introduced by Derek Curtis the second, council president, co-sponsor at the request of the administration. Session, regular meeting, date of introduction, Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. A resolution to approve appointment of Deion Dean Stewart as city treasurer. Whereas the city of Glen Arden, here and after, the city is a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland, operating under article XIE, sorry, of the Constitution of Maryland, and four dash three oh one of the local government article and an annotated code of Maryland as amended, and whereas pursuant to the local government article of the Maryland code, five dash two oh two of the mayor and council of the city of Glen Arden. Maryland here and after, the council is expressively empowered to undertake actions, among other things, necessary to, one, assure the good government of the municipality. And whereas pursuant to section C eight oh one, city treasurer of the city charter, the city treasurer shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city, of the council. And whereas the city council wishes to support, appoint Deion Dean Stewart to the position of treasurer for the city of Glen Arden at the annual salary of eighty-six thousand ninety-two dollars, said the appointment be effective upon the approval of the council. And now therefore it be resolved by the city council of Glen Arden, sitting in regular meeting this fourteenth day of February two thousand twenty as follows. The appointment of Deion Dean Stewart as treasurer of the city of Glen Arden at the annual salary of eighty-six thousand twenty-nine, I'm sorry, ninety-two dollars, be and is hereby approved pursuant upon the successful six-month probation period that the treasurer is authorized to undertake all those powers and duties as set out in section eight oh two of the city charter, that this resolution shall take effect immediately, immediately upon passage of the city council. Resolution.
Let's take them one by one.
Okay.
I have a motion to bring this resolution forward.
I move.
Move by Ms. Ferguson, second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Gion, any discussion?
I have discussion.
Councilwoman Jones.
Okay, once again, with this resolution, I believe that Mr. Stewart has been with us for ten months. Mr. Carrington is also on the line now. I'll bring him in in a minute. Has been with us ten, almost ten, probably ten months or more. When he first came into the treasurer's office, like I said, it was in ashes, that was in disarray. I think he's done a phenomenal job in building the treasury office back together. The salary to me is unacceptable. There's money in his, in the finance office where we can give him a higher salary. And I think that the council should consider his educational background to the citizens and his experience and what he's done in the city of Glen Arden since he's been here. He's passed the six months probationary period as, as to see what he can do and what he will do. And I do believe that his salary should be raised at least by twenty thousand dollars. And there's money in the budget to do that. It was done in the police department when they saw that they needed to raise the salaries of persons working there. It can be done in the, the finance office also. Line item seven one two one offers this. And we can do that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Any other discussion?
Can we take at least a consensus?
I have a.
Okay, let me go to Ms. Gion, and then I'll come back to you, Ms. Jones.
I have a question. I, I, so first I wanted to say that I do, I do feel that Mr. Stewart has been doing a really good job, so I want to say that publicly. I want to just ask a question in regards to where the eighty-six thousand dollars came from. Was this, this was already in the budget, correct?
Correct.
And so what we're asking for now is to go above the budgeted amount per the line item that Councilwoman Jones stated.
Correct.
Okay, and the, the other question that I had, I just want, for clarification purposes, when Councilwoman Jones, I don't know if this is you, Council President, or if this is Councilwoman Jones who can answer, answer this. But Councilwoman Jones, when you spoke of the police salary, the the increase, or however you, you called it, this was done this term, or?
Yes, it was. It was, yes. When the acting chief came on, this is one of the things that he looked forward to assist his men and the, and the administrative staff of having better salaries, and he found monies in his budget to do this.
Okay, thank you. I just want it for clarity. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I mean, we, the police department was a complete different exception because I think none of those men were promoted. And he was looking for money to give them increases based on promotion. And I think there was a line item that wasn't being used, so he had salary savings in there that he could, he could do that with. But I mean, I did some research on city treasurers, and I mean, the median income in the city of Maryland, in the state of Maryland, I'm sorry, from looking at, um, this, the salary range for the city treasurer is anywhere from fifty to sixty-three thousand dollars for a city treasurer. And I mean, I, I mean, like I said, I mean, yes, um, Mr. Stewart does have, have great credentials and everything, but I mean, you got to remember, we are municipal government, and you don't pay, municipal governments don't pay with. You know, I mean, that's just the nature of the game. I mean, his, his experience and his credentials would get him a whole lot more in the private sector, more than likely. But Mr. Mr. Braden came on at seventy, and he actually worked up to eighty-six thousand from increases, cost of living increases and rate increases. So I think the salary actually is, is, is fair based on the size of our budget and the median income, the median range based on the salary scale that I pulled up online for salary dot com for treasurers in the state of Maryland. I mean, like I said, it's saying fifty to sixty-three thousand. So I just think, you know, I mean, sure, he may, he may be worth that much, but working for city government, you're not going to get that kind of money working in city government. I mean, you got to look at something a little bit more. You got to look at something in the private sector. And like I said, and I mean, my thing is, he's also bringing somebody in at the top of the budgeted scale also is an issue for me too. Because I think that you should work your way up to that level, bring them in and then give them somewhere to go. And that's just my feelings. I just think that it's, it's, I mean, right now, I think it's, it's adequate salaries for a six million dollar budget. And, um, you know, for what he's doing.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Yeah. Can you share that study that you?
It was on salary dot com. If you go to salary dot com, it's on there, and I just looked at city treasurer's salary in the state of Maryland. And it gave me a range of fifty to sixty-three thousand dollars for a city treasurer.
Okay.
And that was on salary dot com. I think, I think we need to just, really, I think we need to just sit down and discuss this in a, in a closed meeting because we can really bring them on.
Okay. To, Councilwoman Jones, then.
I, I, I'm sorry. I have brought this, this up several times, and it could have been discussed or bought, someone else could have bought it up if, if there was discussion that was needed. If you look at the municipal governments in the twenty-seven municipalities and look at their treasurers, the salaries are fifty-three is a starting salary for somebody coming in that doesn't have a master's degree. And not, I'm not saying just because he has a master's degree, but just because of the work that he's done in our treasury office to find information, to research information, to deal with the roadblocks that he's had to do, deal with, and to pull our finance department back up to where it is now, just so he can be able to find a piece of paper. I mean, it used to be when you went in the treasurer's office, there was stuff everywhere. You couldn't even sit down because the treasurer had stuff everywhere, boxes, paper, everything, and you, it was just in disarray, complete disarray. This man has bought order, he has bought professionalism, he has bought his skills and talents to bring our finance department to where it is today. And I don't think, like I said, he's been here over almost ten months or maybe over that he doesn't, we don't need to sit down and look and see what kind of employee that he's going to be. He's been here. The prior treasurer that we had came in when he wanted and left when he wanted. Mr. Stewart comes in at, at, at the appointed hour, and he's here past the appointed hour. So I, I think that his work record, his work ethic speaks for itself. What he's done in the treasury department speaks for itself. And I, I deem, I believe that at least we can raise the salary to ten thousand more dollars, if not the twenty that I'm requesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. We'll go to Councilwoman Faree, and then we could take a consensus.
Um, thank you. I, I definitely agree that Mr. Stewart has done a tremendous job. In consideration of the point in year that we're at though, I do think that we need to look at this in the budget process. I would hate to kind of make a decision right now about a change that would require a shifting line item when we're not exactly sure what the plan is for the next fiscal year and what the administration is putting together as the budgeted amount then. I think that would be the appropriate time to look and see if we can increase the salary, which would be effective in next fiscal year, starting July first. So that would be my only hesitation with increasing the salary now. Also, the, the salary that was in the finalized budget for this fiscal year was based upon a salary review that was conducted by Ms. Schultz. She had some materials. And I think I shared it with you, President Curtis as well.
Yes.
Line items. So for a, a city of our size and with our operating budget, that salary is a competitive salary. But again, I think that there's an opportunity as we go through this budget season to increase the salary, making sure that kind of all of the other plans for how that department will be run are considered. I would hate to kind of make a change right now and only to find out that making that change leaves us unable to do other things that we need to do in that, in that finance department. So it's no reflection of Mr. Dean's capabilities, but again, we're at mid-February, and we should start that budgeting process very soon. I think we have to be done with it presented to the public by.
Thank you. Councilwoman Faree, we can proceed with the consensus now. And in fact, the budget process has already started. I saw an email from the city manager already, so a consensus on whether we should increase Dean's salary right now at ten thousand dollars. Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilwoman Faree?
No.
Councilwoman Gion?
Not right now during budget season, yes.
Councilman Harry?
No.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
And my vote is no, but to take it up in the budget season. I'm in agreement with you, Ms. Jones, Councilwoman Jones. I just think the timing of it is appropriate in the budget season. And since it's here, I think we'll go. He's going to be in a good spot to get that increase with proper planning. So. Motion to, oh, that was discussion. Okay, well, vote. We had the motions, correct? Yes, because that was the discussion. So now we're voting on accepting Mr. Stewart as our treasurer.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Faree?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
This is passed.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Stewart. You are the treasurer for the city of Glen Arden. We'll hold on to next legislation and allow Mr. Carrington to make his.
Mr. Carrington is joining.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carrington, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Curtis.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to be with us this evening. As I understand it, you will be doing a presentation on traffic calming measures for this city.
Actually, Ms. Angie Cryer with Get, Since Saskatchewan USA should also be trying to get on. She's actually the person who's going to be doing the presentation for the company.
Okay.
Is she in the waiting room? I did send her the link that the mayor sent to me.
Uh, no, she's not in the, her name is what again?
Uh, Anginet Criner.
I don't, no, I don't, there's no one in the waiting.
Or may say A W?
A W is orange. I admitted her a few minutes ago, that person. Let me see if they're still with us.
I'll, I'll try to see if I can text her as well.
She was here, but now she's gone.
If you would bear with me for just one moment, I'll, I'll try to reach her.
In the interest of time.
Hopefully, just one second. I can pull up, I'll, there's, I'll try to pull up the presentation and.
At least. Mr. Carrington, yeah, if this isn't a good time, you're, you're more than welcome to come back another time if you would like.
We recognize how important your time is, and I, and I do apologize. We, we were in the waiting room for, for a, for a while before we, we were admitted. I, I, I don't know if she just fell off the line. I'm texting her as, 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 as I'm babbling to you all, and I do appreciate your patience. Hopefully, it'd be just one moment.
Okay. And Ms. Jones, if she does join, can you allow her in immediately, please?
Yes.
Mayor Cross, if we could just start with your, your five, if you can limit it to five-minute, your mayor report. Come back to me. Council, Councilman Curtis. Councilman Harry?
Yeah, can we just address the next piece of legislation? This is a short piece of legislation and get that out the way.
Okay. Fine. Uh, the next legislation is a vote to to buy out Mr. Dean from his contract with Mr., contract with Robert Half. Madam Clerk?
Resolution R thirteen dash two thousand twenty-two, introduced by Derek D. Curtis the second, council president, co-sponsor at the request of the administration. Session, regular session, date of introduction, Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty. A resolution for the payment of the conversion fee to Robert Half to transition Deion Dean Stewart from temporary employee, employment to permanent employee. Whereas section three eight oh one, city treasurer of the city charter, the city treasurer shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city, I mean, of the council. And whereas Deion Dean Stewart is qualified to be hired for the position of city treasurer on a permanent basis subject to the reservation of all rights related to the employment relationship of the city and the employee as presently existing or may exist in the future. Whereas the firm, Robert Half, was retained to assist in identifying temporary services for the treasurer role with the understanding that should the individual become a regular employee in any role, that the city would be obligated to reimburse Robert Half an amount equal to thirty percent, which is the top rate of the sliding scale, which was further negotiated to seven percent of the budgeted salary for the city treasurer. Now therefore be it resolved. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council of Glen Arden sit in a regular session this fourteenth day. Of February two thousand twenty approves the necessary expenditure of payment to Robert Half. Of the conversion fee in the amount of six thousand twenty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. Being further resolved and ordained by the city council of Glen Arden, Maryland. That the requirements of charter section three oh eight B. For the introduction and adoption of resolutions has been satisfied. This resolution is hereby enacted this fourteenth day of February two thousand twenty.
Have a motion to bring this legislation to the floor for vote.
So.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilwoman Fareed?
Um, yeah, shouldn't this have been a prerequisite to approving, uh, Mister Stewart as the treasurer if? What happens if this doesn't pass? We still have to pay it, right? Because we've now made him an, an employee. So I don't know if I'm, if I'm missing something.
No, we, it should have read that first, but, um, but all measures this will, I expect this to pass. So. Uh, you're right, maybe we should have done that one first in order. Um, but.
Okay, I'm just, if you're confident it's gonna pass. I just wouldn't know what happened if it, if it didn't pass. Like, what, what would that mean? We would still be obligated to pay if he was an employee.
Yeah, well.
Why are we even voting on this?
Well, all council members knew that in order to, to appoint him, that we had to pay this. So. The fact that a council member would, you know, vote to have this person as a treasurer and not vote to. To buy the personnel would be baffling to me, but, um.
I know, but I think it did happen when we had, um, the situation with the council clerk, right? There were some people who. Voted against the buyout, but did vote to have her be the council clerk.
It is the only way that he can be the treasurer. And I, I would, I would expect that, that every council member would have considered that in their decision to vote for Mister Stewart.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Housewoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harry?
Staying.
Councilwoman McGee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yeah.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
We have five, this is passed.
Right. Congratulations again, Mister Stewart. All right, uh, is, uh, Mister Carrington?
Yes, Mister Curtis, it, it looks like Ms., uh, Ms. Criner is having some technical difficulty getting back on the call and. Um, I would like her to be able to do the presentation in case she has some specific questions that I could answer about some of their operations. Um, would it be possible for us to try to schedule this for another date?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, I appreciate your patience and your diligence and, and Madam Mayor, I really appreciate your work in helping us get this set up. I'm sorry that. We had some cross signals and some technology issues, but, uh, if you'll just give us another opportunity, we'll get this all cleaned up and make sure we have everyone on the line.
Mister Carrington, do you know, uh, approximately how long the presentation will take?
Um, we, we can tailor the presentation, uh, so that it, it fits within a, you know, a twenty-minute timeframe. We give you time for questions and answers. Or we can even pare it down a little bit further than that. And I can certainly, you know, in the interest of, of your time and attention right now. I certainly am comfortable going over broad strokes. However, as we talked about the actual contract and like, I, I wouldn't want to speak for, uh, since it's got so. For, uh, contractual terms.
Okay, well, let's keep it all together, uh, and then, uh, we can talk about a time where, uh. You and your team is available, uh, and bring you back on at a later date.
Thank you very much, Mister Curtis. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mister Carrington, and you have a, a good evening. Um, you're mute.
Me too, you all. Happy Valentine's Day.
Okay, happy Valentine's Day. Thank you. All right, well, we can move on, uh, to, uh, the mayor's report, mayor.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Uh, this is the mayor's report for the month of January twenty twenty-two. Uh, as of, uh, January, we did submit, uh, four new hiring actions. Uh, all have closed throughout January and have been submitted. Personnel, uh, been interviewed for the council's consideration. The resolutions have been prepared. Uh, that is for the, uh, part-time enforcement officer, the gold room crew member, the gold room coordinator, which we've heard of, will be voted on, uh, tomorrow. And the Public Works Maintenance Tech One. Uh, as far as resolutions sent to the council, we have, um. Four resolutions that have been sent, uh, one to approve the director of public works, which we'll see on tomorrow. Um, we also have the sidewalk contractor selection. Uh, we have the documentations for, uh, the inclusive ADA compliance. Uh, entrances to the sidewalks. Uh, we're asking for that to be a contract mod based on the selected contractor. Uh, each of the contractors have agreed to make that mod. Uh, GS Proctor to be voted on. We have, uh, council actions taken to extend our snow and ice contract. Uh, so, uh, that has been moved on forward and we also submitted a request to purchase another. Snow plow and truck for our public works so that the snow and ice control contract will not have to be used as extensively as we had to use it this winter season. But will allow our public works to be regular maintenance and the snow and ice control contract will be for the initial heavy snow. City Treasurer Dean Stewart, congratulations. Uh, council action to approve the chief of police. Uh, as of right now, we're still waiting for the commissioner to approve the formal package. Uh, selection has been sent to the council. Uh, council actions to interview, um, Glen Arden Housing Authority. There is, uh, one additional resolution that we would like to prepare, uh, for the city council, one additional. Uh, resume that we would like to push your way once it arrives. The mayor's office has supported nine office call meetings. Uh, we have taken, uh, the lead, if you will, to bring urban edge properties to the city council as of last meeting. Um, they provided us a very good overview of their intentions relative to, uh, Whitmore Town Center at Glen Arden for citizens to review, um, the recording. Uh, for the Sinorama Sandwich Boards, uh, we did get a chance to talk, thank you, Council President. On the, uh, repurpose of funds, uh, this particular piece of line item, uh, new budget line item was selected. Uh, Glen Arden Hills community resident is calling about various security concerns, particularly on the second and the fourth floor. Uh, this has been reported to the chief of police. Apparently there is concern of, of, of various types of, uh, illicit drugs being produced there. So, uh, I know that this is our territory, but this is, uh, one that I've asked the chief of police, uh, acting, uh, to actually look forward. Into maybe bringing in, um, a county assistance. Uh, cleanup was, uh, taken care of on McLean Avenue, and we're also taking forward to, uh, put the no dumping signs to ensure that that stays clean. As far as Leslie Avenue and Grant, uh, there has been a request for a permit to put a personal driveway in. Uh, primarily because the road is really heavily, uh, populated by various cars. So we are looking at across the city. Areas where, um, you know, we could put in sidewalks if residents want to do that or driveways if residents want to do that. The voucher status for the permanent housing, um, we are experiencing a, a closeout, if you will, for Glen Arden Housing Authority. As well as Glen Arden Hills, each of which has a year-long waiting list. I will tell you, city council, I've gotten no less than eight calls from various residents wanting to understand if there was room or availability. Uh, we do, I have talked to both of the directors, um, and they are keeping me apprised of if something comes available. Uh, I do know Glen Arden Hills is expecting to have a few, uh, rooms that will open up, which should bring her list, uh, from that one year into within six months. We had two residential inquiries about purchasing land across the city. Uh, city manager and I actually went out with one of the residents who would like to purchase land there on McLean. Um, our discussion was relative to rather than purchasing the land, just allowing for an access, an easement. And that seemed to be acceptable for the requister. Uh, BGE, uh, will look at putting in a street light on Fulton. Uh, it's been a request for the past thirty years, I understand from the residents there. Uh, it's gonna cost about four hundred and ten dollars, so a minimum cost. Uh, but this will allow for that area next to the, uh, the aqueducts to actually have some lighting. Uh, there on the end of Fulton Street. Uh, the state of Glen Arden address actually ran, uh, on the thirteenth of January. Uh, covered the first hundred days from the mayoral and as well as the city manager. Uh, we addressed some critical community impacts that will be coming in this year. We also talked to the need for viewing, feedbacks and appreciate any inputs going forward for the Opera Funds. This is the American Rescue Plan Funds. Uh, city manager spoke to you on last week about creating a survey and, uh, it would be very helpful for each of the ward reps to work with us. To actually make sure that that survey gets out appropriately, uh, to the citizens in each wards, one, two, and three. Every second Wednesday, uh, and holding mayoral town halls or mayoral forums. Uh, we are basically taking this as an approach to, uh, address the increasing concerns that are happening across our cities. For, um, domestic, uh, dispute, uh, anxiety, uh, mental health wellness in our community, which is a national theme. Uh, we're also utilizing this as an opportunity where if the county or the executive leadership, like the senator would like to come in and have. An address moment, then this is what that will be for. The administration will proceed with, uh, smart communities. In fact, it already has. So as you're looking at, um, Comcast seventy-one and Verizon sixteen. Then you're seeing smart communities in action. Uh, we have taken, uh, front to host the, uh, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Peace Gathering for January the seventeenth. Was a huge success, about three hundred and seventeen persons attended online and an all-outdoor event. We had about a hundred and fifteen in cars. They're receiving, uh, major shout-out, went to the City of Glen Arden, also over the NBC News as well as the Washington Informer. Uh, many thanks to all of the supporters that came out to help us. Um, we had, uh, various municipalities who also joined into this. As well as nonprofit organizations who did support to make this a successful event. Um, I will be the mistress of ceremony for the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast, but it has been moved to February the twenty-sixth. So, uh, that's gonna be at the American Legion Post two seventy-five. Uh, we've been holding throughout the month of February, every Thursday night. Movies, uh, after dark. This is, uh, our approach to addressing the national theme of mental health and wellness in our communities. We are showing movies that support Black History Month as well as Black excellence, as each movie will showcase a true story from across the DMV. Uh, this Thursday, pending It Doesn't Rain, will be Remember the Titans, which briefs, which talks to the integration of schools in, uh, Alexandria, Virginia. The American Red Cross is partnering with the City of Glen Arden and Maryland Park Police, uh, as we are doing blood drives. Uh, we just had a blood drive. January the twentieth, uh, thirty units of blood was able to, um. Essentially give lifeblood to save over ninety lives, but there is more need and we'll be doing it again, uh, thirtieth of March. Uh, we're collaborating, uh, with the Public Works, uh, for the pothole that happened there on Tyrell. Uh, so we're asking citizens that if you see something like that that's happening, let the city manager know. I just happen to be driving through on my way to work and the citizens had put a tire in there. Uh, took a picture, sent it to Public Works. It was fixed by the end of the day. Uh, also, there was a sign down on Tyrell, and I don't know what happened with Tyrell this month, but a lot happened, but. The stop sign got ran over presumably by the bus or, you know, some big truck, but we were able to get that put up. So. Just asking everyone, if there is something happening across the city, you see an issue, report it to the city manager and we'll get it taken care of. Uh, the gold room does need new chairs. Uh, we have the funds to purchase hundred new chairs. Uh, and then what we will have to do is put the other chairs up for, uh, purchase for other municipalities who may need. Uh, and we are looking at GS Proctor sidewalk contracts, ADA modifications as far as legislation. Uh, we're looking at legislation of using green belt contractor for beautification. And, um, we also have the resolution, if you will, for the, um, expanded community communication strategy. Uh, you, we do have our new, uh, website, which went live today. Um, I think you'll maybe find that it's appreciation for it. It's not quite as bad. We actually were able to. Get the major headings in yellow and then the subheadings in white on a blue background, which makes it a little easier to read. And we minimize some of the fields that was originally shown, uh, city council when we showed it to you. So it's a much better product and much thanks to. Ms. Monet Ward, our web media specialist, who's been taking care of that. Um, we do have projected ten external calls that will come in the future. Uh, for the mayoral office and we're also wanting to set up, uh, residence monthly with the mayor. And will more than likely go with the Glen Arden Housing Authority, who actually, uh, has submitted for a contract work. To happen to improve the actual appearance of the Glen Arden Housing Authority over the next five years. So. Uh, they have submitted to HUD and the meeting, uh, occurred on last weekend. It was very successful. So we'll look forward to seeing changes at the Glen Arden Housing Authority. So, um, outside of that, sir, I'll just yield back any additional time. Um, thank you for your questions.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. With that, uh, that was the last item on the agenda and. Uh, I'll open it up to citizens' comments. Uh, I'm sorry, one second. Uh, Councilman Jones? I can't hear you. You're on, you're on mute.
Had a couple of questions concerning the mayor's report. Let this person in. Uh. The, um, you talked about, uh, uh, driveways. When a, when a resident or homeowner wants a driveway, they have to go to the county to secure a permit. So it's not like the city can go around and ask them if, if they want a driveway. That's at their discretion. If, if that's something that they want. Now, if, if it's a driveway that's gonna conflict with property lines or some issue that the county sees that, uh, they will not, um. Issue a permit for that, then, um, that's another issue that, uh, the city needs to take in consideration, because we have had that issue before. In fact, I'm trying to pull up the information from one citizen that had, uh, came back and asked me concerning his driveway, Mister Valquez. At, that's at the corner of Leslie and Reed Street. So I don't know where the one is at Leslie and Tyrell that you spoke of, but, uh, it's Leslie and Reed. That, uh, where he had asked concerning that again. So, um.
But that's, that's correct. Councilwoman Jones, it is Leslie and Reed. Tyrell was relative to the tire being put in there in road construction work. And it is the same resident, and he has gone to the county.
Yes, we had, all of that information came back to the, to the city. They had, he put up for a, um. Um, a hearing, he had to have a hearing afterwards and then the, uh, county made a determination. So all of that paperwork needs to be repulled and re-examined to see why the county exactly said, uh, that they didn't want to, uh, issue a. A permit for what it was he was trying to do. So once I have all that information repooled or the city can pull it back up. I'm sure they should have documentation because once the decision was rendered, a decision was sent to, in writing to the city concerning that, um, hearing.
Hmm, and we, we have a decision and the issue was there wasn't enough space between where the sidewalk would be. And where the door would open and a person would get out of the car and have room to walk. So. The issue is that the, the way the sidewalk, the requirement of sidewalk spacing. Would not allow enough space on the left side of the car, which is the driver's side for the door to properly open, because it kind of sits in a divot. Uh, so, uh, what we've asked is particularly, um, if the resident can move it over some more into the yard. And the resident is, you know, amenable to do that, you know, he's accepted that as an op- option. So, um, I think we just need to go back to deep I, um, the resident, you know, it's. Um, the resident, you know, is wanting to go back to Deepie and ask this question, if he moves it over like another two feet. And just take up a little bit more of the yard, would that be acceptable? Thank you.
Alright, uh, and the second, uh, issue you brought up, or not issue, but so, second thing you brought up was, um. The purchase of property on McLean. McLean where we just cleaned up, I think that there was a issue that, that was a resident that wanted to, um. He wanted to buy the unbuildable lots in front of McLean, which belonged to the city. But those, uh, in giving that information to the engineer, the city engineer Johnson, they came back and told the city. Uh, it gave me an, uh, Chief O'Donnell informed us that, uh, there was some things to. In order to mitigate that property or to sell it, it would cost the city, the city would have to pay somewhere around seventeen thousand dollars. I still have that information that I will share with the city manager. Uh, as far as, uh, wanting to, uh, if he's, if there is a question, I'm not sure if that. Those unbillable lots would be sold or not, but, uh, once the city presented the, I'm sorry, once the engineer presented it to. Uh, Acting Chief O'Donnell and myself at that time, uh, he was not willing to, uh, spend, uh, the seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand dollars. Of city money to have that, uh, property mitigated in order to sell. So I do have that information. Um, the next thing was the B, the BGE, the, uh, light, I've been down Fulton Street looking for where this light. Can you give me an, an, an address where this light post is supposed to, where these citizens want this light posts? Cause there's like, lighting all down Fulton Avenue, but I'm not seeing, I know one light is turned in towards that little park. So, um, other than that, I don't, there's light lamp posts all down, uh, Fulton. Can you tell me where this is?
Yes, so when you turn on to Fulton and you get to the end where the dead end is, that's where it is. They're right there at the ravine. Uh, so, one of the citizens has a boat, uh, right in the, in the, on the side of their driveway. So it would connect to the light post that's right in front of that one.
Now, looking at Fulton, when I come down Fulton from the rec center, I'm riding down Fulton, I'm crossing over Reed Street. I'm not seeing a dead, the dead end would be houses on, um. Wesley. So where's this at again?
So when you t- turn right onto Bright Seat Road, right there in front of the church, take the immediate right. Uh, and if you continue down, you're dead end there.
A right on Bright Seat Road?
Mm-hmm. So at the library, turn right.
Okay.
And then once you're by the church, make the needed, the immediate right.
I think that's McLean. The other side of McLean?
Well, it's a different side. Um, I will share, I will share the diagram.
Yeah, I think that. Alright, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and, Miss Guillaume and, Miss Guillaume, uh, and then we're moving to citizens' comments. Uh, because we have had, and Ms. Green, you'll be the first one. Cause I wanna give as much time as possible to the citizens, so, Ms. Guillaume.
Thank you, Council President, and you're fine with both ways, cause it's, it translates the same, so you're fine, um, with Gil, McGilian. Um, I just had a question for Madam Mayor, just if, if there's been any, um, movement on the chief of police position?
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Guillaume, the position has been, um, um, staffed out to a neighboring, uh, district. Uh, our, our city to actually do the investigation part. And then that will be submitted to the police commissioner for evaluation. Uh, we were able to get the, um, selectee lined up for the firing range. So he should have his firing credentials and, um, just for record, um, many of our police will have to get recertified. Because they've changed the gun style, so we've lined up a lot of things, if you will, about the firing range. So once all that's done, then the police commissioner will look at the investigative report on our new select. And it should be a done deal, so we're just waiting for the police commissioner to say yes. And his firing certifications.
Okay, so the background check and, so i- is that the background check that you're talking over, is that something else as far as the other? Uh, the neighboring cities that's doing the, that's trying to bring it to a close, I, I can't say it as eloquently as you did, so.
But it is all incorporated into the full background check, so for the police chief. It's a little bit more extensive than like, you know, what we had to do for Mr. Stewart, right? So for him, I mean, it's down into the weeds, so their training records and, um, their re- their references are all. Credential checked, it's almost to the, um, uh, well, it's, it's really an I and T dotted. Uh, investigation, so it's way more extensive. I will say that, uh, city manager was mentioning that, uh, when Chief Ayers came into Cotton City, it was about a six, uh, week ordeal. So hopefully it won't be that extensive, but it is a little bit more extensive than, you know, our regular background checks that we do for the city.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, now we will transition over to citizens' comments, Ms. Green.
Well, I have a question, I'm on the Glen Arden Board. And I got an email from the chairperson, and I responded to him back concerning if you still wanna be on the election board. Out of courtesy, I responded back to Mr. Montgomery. And he sent an email prior to asking us where we wanna be on the election board, because. If we don't, they have to report that we don't want to be on the election board. But my question is, he's, he says something about. Um, we're gonna have meetings, maybe in February or March, he will send agenda on what we'd be discussing. And my question is, is a mandatory members on the election board have to be part of. The meetings in which this chairperson want to have, when there is no election going on. I wanna know what is the position of the board members, um, in twenty twenty-two, when there's no, um. Election going on, so what, um, meetings do we have to attend and? What, what, what's, what's, what, what we're discussing, which I haven't got the agenda yet, so. I was just wondering that mandatory to get this, um, attending future meetings, um, in February or March. Um, if you are on the election board, and what are you gonna discuss and what you gotta do?
Thank you for your question, Ms. Green, uh. I think Councilman Jones raised her hand, sorry, and then I'll come to you, Mr. Herr.
I would think at this, because I think we did, uh, want the election board when we, uh, certified all of them and the, um. One of the things was that, uh, they sat down and come up with a criteria, because we had nothing in writing about how. Uh, or, or standard operating procedure for elections and how things would be done, and I thought this election board was gonna kind of formulate that. Because the, um, the election committee is for like five-year term, I think, that, um, you're, um. Certified for.
Uh, okay, my question was, my question was. What, I, I know what the terms are on what you, I mean, you could say you wanna be on a board, but my question is. What is your, as, as being on a board, what is a mandatory that you gotta meet? And have these future meetings like for February and March or throughout twenty twenty-two is a mandatory that you meet? What are you gonna discuss? We haven't had an agenda yet, so let me, what do you wanna discuss throughout the year? If, I don't know how often these meetings gonna occur, is a mandatory that you go to these meetings to discuss what, when there's not an election going on?
That's my question. Right, about putting together some s- operating procedures for the election board. Things that, that, that we don't have in writing in the city, that the election board can sit down and say, we, 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 we did the election. Now this is what needs to be put in place in order to, for the next election board or the next election that comes along. Whether you, you're on the election board or I'm on the election board, we'll have some idea about what it is that we need to do in order to, uh. Fully function as an election board, that, that's what I'm thinking that it may be.
Okay, well, I just like I said, I did not get an agenda yet, you see, in the February or March, okay? Now, what I wanted to know, after we sit down and discuss what the chairperson is closer already have acted. I wanna know, is a mandatory that we gotta meet throughout the year when there's not an election going on? That's my question.
Uh, Councilman Herron, and then, oh.
Yeah, let me say this, um. I think first of all, I mean, everybody who's on the election board, volunteers on the election board, and I was reading the rules and regulations of the election board and. Until the person decides they resign or if they do something illegal, that's the only way to get in the election board. So I don't think nobody should be grilled about whether they're gonna be on the election board or whether they're not gonna be on the election board. They're on the election board until they turn a resignation in, so I don't think no one should be getting grilled about that and, um, and as for, um. Meeting, I mean, basically, anything that, any rules or regulations that's gonna get set down, the, uh, charter is quite clear, the council does that. The council makes the rules and regulations for the elections, and it says that quite clearly that the council by ordinance, so. Put in place any rules or regulations that we deem necessary for our elections. So, only thing that they need to do is give us what they, what they, what they may wanna consider. But the bottom line is, it's something that we as a council need to discuss, um, to see what's, what's going on. As for meeting throughout the year, I mean, I've never heard our election board meet throughout the year on anything, I mean. Throughout the, the, the downtime, when it gets close to election, they start meeting. Outside of that, they don't, you know, um, cause there's nothing going on, you know, um, so. Like I said, again, I, I think that no one should be getting grilled by the chair or anybody else about whether they're gonna serve, whether they're not gonna serve. They can choose to serve, cause they're volunteering, and if they choose not to serve, then they'll turn in a resignation. Other than that, I think they need to be left alone to serve on a board how they see fit. Um, that's all.
Hey, thank you, because, um, I did communicate with a former person that was on the election board. And she did tell me that they never met after the election, of it is submitting what the city council needed about. You know, the last one, but periodically, like you said, the downtime, they wouldn't, they, they never met periodically, you know? So, this is what I was trying to make sure that I asked in twenty twenty-two, because that was another time. So, I appreciate you, um, clarifying that you don't have to be a rash or whatever that you wanna, still be on the board. I still, I sent an email then to be courteous, saying I do wanna be on the board to answer this question, but. These future meetings in February and March, this was, like you said, downtown, what have we meeting for, okay? So now that it's clear, um, I feel better, okay? And I appreciate you giving me the input on your position. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Councilwoman Gill, let's see, you have your hand up.
I believe Councilwoman Fareed had her hand up first and then.
Uh, okay, sorry, it switched the order, uh, to make it look like you had your hand up first, sorry, Councilwoman Fareed.
Um, yes, I, I think I was not, I was not able to find where in the charter or in the code. Where it says the council sets the rules for the, um, board of elections. I did think that the board of elections in terms of their operations was something independent. What, what I do see in the charter was in section seven oh one regarding the board of elections. Um, Mr. Herron is correct that the, the terms, um. They are, they have those terms as they're appointed and run for four years, um, that is in the charter. Um, but it does say that they are in there for four years, and we know that we don't have an election. Every single year, so in reading this, my assumption would be that there are activities that are expected. Of election board members within those four years outside of just, um, organizing an election. I don't know what those would be, I don't know that we would prescribe what those are either. I think really the best thing is to ask the question of the, um, the chair of the election board. But I, am I look through here right now, this, the code and charter, I do not see where it. It says that, um, the council, uh, you know, gives the rules for what the board of elections does.
Councilwoman Gill.
In the interest of time, I was going to basically share the same thing, um, which is, I just, I would hate for it to be a slippery slope. I don't, you know, I don't want council to get involved in the election board's activities now. As far as, you know, the legalities pertaining to section seven oh one, absolutely, um, a- as far as the establishment of the board of elections. But when it comes down to what are we, what are they meeting about or who called the meeting? I feel like we as legislators need to focus on what we were tasked to do. And not interfere with that, so my, my advice is, and, and I believe. Um, the beautiful woman stated that, and I would encourage her to keep doing that, is to ask the chair. Number one, nobody should be threatened to get off anything, that's my opinion, but ask the chair, what is the agenda for such proposed meeting? End of story, but I, I just would hate for us to jump in and get involved in something that we should not, cause if that's the case, we're gonna get involved in every single committee. You know, so that's it.
Thank you. Alright, um.
Oh, Mr. President, just one thing, right quick, just section, section seventeen of the charters where we have control over the election process.
Okay.
Sorry, thanks.
Ms. Carolyn.
Uh, yes, I got a couple of statements, I do have one question. For where's the blood drive gonna be held, and about, and oh, she just said in Glen Arden, but where in Glen Arden?
I think you, it's gonna be at the Glen Arden Community Center in the gym.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Croft, you made a statement on one of your, um, community reach-out. Program that the city of Glen Arden is not a sustainable community. And that, again, is not a true statement, we are a sustainable community. And, uh, we went through a long process in order to become a sustainable community. So you need to check your office and see where the information is, and then again, I would say. That will also be able to help you to get money for the sidewalks. My other statement is, mayor, it's some kind of way you can reduce your report, cause your report is very wordy. And the other statement is, I have a problem with the way the agenda is going out. Because once the agenda is set. Um, you just can't change the agenda after it has been set and give to the, give to the public. Here again, I have another agenda. Here again, I have another agenda that is totally different from the agenda that y'all went over tonight. This is the third time this is, this has happened, and this is what y'all gonna do on a repeated basis. I'm gonna have to find out what steps I can take to, to find out why y'all doing this. And I have to go to, to the Open Meetings Act and file a complaint about how y'all are doing these reports. I will, because this doesn't make sense, the Open Meeting Act says, once your agenda is posted and given to the public. It cannot be, cannot be changed. So y'all need to start of looking at how y'all are working with these agendas and making sure that the public is able to have the right agenda. When they come to the meetings. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carolyn, Mr. Hammond?
Yes, good evening, everyone, and happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Uh, just two questions, the first question is in regards towards, uh, what's the status for the answer to the playground, uh, Seventh Street? For the, uh, citizen input. And my second question is, uh, the possibility for us to, uh, incorporate a bike lane from, uh, M O K to, uh, Death Row. Two questions in regards to the bike lane and the status of the playground on Seventh Street.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Hammond, for your comment, so, um, regarding the bike lane, as, um, you and I had talked about that. Was part of the, um, street retrofitting plan, and I think, uh, Mayor Cross alluded to that as well. But part of the conversation that we were hoping to have this evening with, um, uh, Carrington Associates, I think is the name of the company. Um, that presentation was.
that presentation was to kind of understand what, uh, traffic calming, um, measures we could have and to make sure that this is all bundled as part of a conversation. So I'm sorry that we were not able to proceed with that. But as it relates to, um, a bike lane, there is, um, there, we can, that is a use for ARPA, um, and that is something that we can discuss. So as Mayor Cross pointed out, she did ask that the ward representative, um, bring forth ideas. As you shared with me, that is one of the ideas that is on the list. Um, so the short answer is there's no progress on it at this point because we haven't yet discussed it amongst all of the other um, items that are pending. As it relates to the Seventh Street Park, um, Mayor Cross has sent out some communications to us regarding the types of, um, and help me out, Mayor Cross, like the equipment that can be placed there. Um, the resolution that we passed, um, towards the end of last year was when the city manager comes on that she will begin to do that and start to look into, um, permits. So information has been shared around the types of structures that can go there. And I know that, um, Mayor Cross has put together a plan that, um, expands on that resolution. So it's not just children's playground equipment, but that it also will be able to accommodate, um, I think calisthenics and other things for people across the city, but I'll admit.
Uh, yes, thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Um, and thank you, Mr. Hammond, for the question. So we do have a national fitness campaign. Uh, grant opportunity which will expand, uh, the Seventh Street Park. We will also keep the basketball goal that's there. We'll pull the grass back. But, um, the National Fitness Campaign would allow us to put national fitness parks. Fitness parks do have an ability to have your, uh, cell phone, track your progress. Uh, have an ability to actually have, um, exercise plans. Uh, we can pick the design that we want. Uh, the design ranges from the very young all the way to the very old, uh, by way of exercise and fitness. So they've done a very good job to incorporate a corporate fitness plan that would cover the entire, uh, youth to, um, age series across our city. Uh, and also it could incorporate artwork from our local, uh, elementary schools, which brings aside a, a, a piece of pride and ownership as well. So the overall project is something we've been talking about. It's an evolution to existing parks. Uh, and introduction, introduction, if you will, to new park areas. And, um, we would present that as well, uh, as an evolution to, uh, the Martin Luther King Park in Ward One. Uh, based on the design that we've seen, it could support that as well. Because it's, um, a response to COVID nineteen having taken us out of fitness. The American Rescue Plan monies can be used, uh, in the grant process as well. So this is a good thing. And, uh, if I may, for Councilwoman Jones, I did submit you the information, uh, that you requested. And that was for eighty-seven oh eight Fulton. And I also sent, uh, pictures of the exact location, ma'am.
Have that information.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other citizens' comments? If so, please raise your hand or you can unmute yourself if you do not know how to raise your hand. Alright. With no additional com- comments, uh, Councilwoman Jones.
I just wanted to ask the administration where we are on the Martin Luther King Park. I know that, um, grant will be up a- at the end of, um, this year. Is it this year? Where are we as far as getting the, the, uh, fulfilling the requirements of that grant with, uh, what we said we were gonna do?
I thank you for the question, Councilwoman Jones. Um, we actually had a discussion about that last week, uh, myself and city manager Barbara. And, uh, we're taking a look at the plans that was submitted and she actually met, if I'm not mistaken, with, uh, Councilman Herring as well as former Councilwoman Smallwood on, you know, what the plan was prior year. Uh, and we'll try and bring that forward. Uh, again, the fitness parks, as we looked at them, could actually support the design that you have. But if that design is already, you know, a contractor has been selected, then we just need to go forward. We submitted, um, we will submit, as I was, we submitted a, um, program manager, uh, PD, position description, uh, for hiring someone to help us manage the American Rescue Plan money. Uh, and that's one of the key roles that will help us move all of these projects forward. Because we need to have someone dedicated and capturing and making those reports on time. So, um, I know the city manager has that PD, uh, ready. Uh, and once we submit that and get it approved by the council to create that position, then we can move a lot faster on it. But we do have that in, in our scope as well. Uh, we're looking at all of this at least before summer. We should have all of this stuff started before summer. That's the goal.
But those are two separate grants. The grant that we got from the state for Martin Luther King Park is one separate entity to the opera funds. So that, that program manager is going to be for the opera funds, not necessarily for what's going on at Martin Luther King. Uh, which in, in the past with the Martin Luther King site, the city manager was able to handle that, uh, what needed to happen with that. The last three, three city managers that we've had.
That's correct. That's correct. She'll take care of that piece. Um, and I just tied them both together. But we'll take care of both of them. The goal is to get action moving before summer on both parks.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Cross and Councilwoman Jones. With that, I would like to adjourn this. It's eight forty-six. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. Uh, see you guys tomorrow at the Publicary. Thank you.